Thirty-three. And I call this Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Anybody like to speak on the invocation? Okay. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Chaney, it's always good to see you and the Boy Scouts. Welcome. Go ahead, sir.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, A.J. Appreciate it. Okay. Acknowledgements and presentations, there is none. Citizens to be heard, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. On the regular agenda, we have two on non-agenda items. We will put the three-minute rule into effect, gentlemen, please. And with two people signed up, the first one on the list is Bruce Smiley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Bruce Smiley, 247 Fox Hall Lane. Let me assure the mayor and the council that my fatigue in addressing this council is probably only surpassed by your fatigue in having to listen to me address you. Once again, I'm troubled by the lack of knowledge-based preparation, lack of factual research of ordinance and state law, and the applicable compliance of many of the items on this agenda. It appears to me, once again, that many of the items on this agenda are not only not in the best interest of our citizens, morally and ethically wrong, but in some cases pure violations of law intended only to be political self-serving to a small group of individual council members. It also appears to me while reading this agenda, there have been clearly demonstrated violent violations of the Open Meetings Act, at best enrolling quarums, and at worst clear disregard for the law in general. This is not the first time that this has been observed. There has been an acceptance of the learning curve for the new council member. However, the appearance of total disregard of the members who have sat on this council in the past should be completely experienced and adherent, this conduct is completely unacceptable. As it appears that the current council, at least in part, wishes to continue to erode the authority of the city manager in violation of the voter-approved state legislative laws of our governmental form, it also appears demonstrated by recent campaign-style email by a sitting member that her intent is to, without reasonable regard, erode the confidence in the performance of the city manager, which may be legal under the law, but is highly immoral and unethical. I would recommend to the council that you place on the agenda a voter referendum to change our form of city government by the August deadline, or you conduct yourselves within the law. This is the third time I've stood before you and have had to remind you to become educated of your legal responsibilities. Failure to adhere to these laws is now truly a continuation of a pattern of conduct which demonstrates a gross ignorance of duties and careless disregard for the welfare of our citizens and a breach of your sworn oath of office. I, along with so many citizens, are growing so weary of the contentious negative dialogue of all the things that others have not done for our city versus the complete absence of any plans or actions regarding what positive things you plan to do for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Mr. Pinkson, I'd like to apologize to you, I didn't see you out there as far as the invocation is concerned. I'm sure you would have been glad to bless this body tonight, but thank you for being here, okay? Mr. John Squire.
John Squire, 2H, Chatham Court. First of all, before I begin, I understand I cannot talk about an agenda item. However, I don't see an opportunity to sign up for the city manager's update, and particularly the progress of the AT&amp;T and Grande installations in the alley. I do want to discuss our situation that we've been dealing with in our alley, and so I think I beg to ask the question is, can I talk about that?
Not up at the podium, but we will go ahead and sign you, we'll have you sign up afterwards, okay, to be able to speak on that item.
So I can sign up for that item?
Not on this.
But even though it's an agenda item? I mean, it's not.
It's got to be done during the agenda times when it's signed up, John.
Okay, I just want to go over that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Okay. Next, we're going on to the consent agenda, that's accept the final report ending May the 31st, 2018. Do I have anyone who, I don't even see it listed on the agenda, Minnie, is there a supplement to the agenda as far as what's on that? Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, Minnie. My attached to mine. Can I see it, please? Is this the one that covers the minutes? Thank you, Minnie. Is there anyone that wants to pull any one of these items or discuss?
Well, I'd like to discuss the financial report.
Okay.
The only thing.
And I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that, was that item A?
A, yes, sir.
A, okay. Anyone else? Anyone who wants to pull any items on the consent agenda? Okay, it seems like there's one, Leslie, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm just concerned that according to the financial report, nobody's over budget, but according to the figures, it appears that pretty much all of the departments are over budget with seven months to go. So I think we need to take another look at the financial report and get these things straight.
Douglas, did you want to speak on that?
I just wanted to ask, Ms., I can't pronounce, what's your, how is your name pronounced? Fagan, a question, that's all.
Falls under the budget, it's on the agenda?
I noticed there are a few items that are already 100 percent of allocated budget. What does the city do when a department is running over budget of a line item? Do you stop funding whatever they're doing? Do you move funds from one to, one place to another? And if you do move funds from one place to another, upon what authority do you have to do that?
Well, this city, you do not have a policy that speaks to that specific question you're asking. Some cities have it based on sections, in other words, you have salaries, supplies, and it's, and departments have the ability to move within those sections. Some cities have it that the city manager, again, it's different policies, it's, it's up to, it's a policy, and you don't have any, but it could be that the city manager has the ability to move within departments, but you don't have that type of policy. So, I mean, obviously, if it's a line item, that's something that you have to continue spending, you can't say, don't go buy, you know, particular fuel, I mean, fuel's not over right now, but I'm just trying to make a simple example. If you had fuel that was over, you can't stop purchasing fuel to run your vehicles, so, but again, the way you're, you don't have a policy that's ever been adopted that I can find.
Well, that's, it's interesting, because I would think when you go over, you do stop spending, and then you go to the body that set up the budget and ask for an amendment to the budget. Or else, why do we even have a budget? If you can maneuver monies around here and there, what do you recommend?
Well, I think, okay, so it's kind of off-topic, so for me, this is a financial report, this is what the agenda item is about. Based on the way it's adopted, I think at this time, it wasn't the city manager's budget that's here, he wasn't here when it was produced. Departments are working to make sure they don't go over in total. Most of your departments across their, you know, in total, they're doing well, and it's something that should be looked at later on, bringing different policies back. Maybe you change your chart of accounts where you have categories, you know, right now, you look for items, they're all over, I've, I've been, have several budgets that I've done with GFOA, gotten the award, and this budget, the setup of this wouldn't even, you couldn't even turn it in. So, again, we're kind of off-topic, but you can't just stop spending money because a line item's over that maybe wasn't appropriately budgeted. That, I mean, that would not be physically responsible either.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get your philosophy, because I want to make sure I get it right, because you have a lot of excellent stuff here. So when you have a line item and you're about to go way over, you don't think it should go back to the department to stop it? Or do you think it should go back to the city council for a budget amendment? Or do you just keep moving on and spending regardless of how much over the budget you go? I want to know what you think.
I think, well.
Ms. Fagan, hold on, I'm going to interrupt here for a second. That's the duty of the city manager, Douglas, and have you talked to the city manager regarding this? I find it strange that out of the seven months we're into this and we're over budget, that all of a sudden, we're over budget? Did we not see this coming? You are the treasurer, is that correct?
We are over budget on maybe four items.
Okay, are you the treasurer?
And I am the treasurer.
Okay, well, then why didn't this come up last month, or why didn't you inform the executive officer of the city that we were headed in that direction?
Because last month, we laid this item to this month, that's why it didn't come up last month, that's why.
Okay, well, I would appreciate it as the executive officer of this city that you notify me when something's going to go over budget. That you cannot take away from me.
I don't get the notification, except when I, we get the stuff right here. That's when I receive notification of what's going on. It's a simple.
You had it last month.
And I had brought it before the council, and I wanted to discuss it, but it was postponed for this month.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
Once again, what is your philosophy for best government?
I think you see, need some policies on your budget, on line items and who has authority, and that's something y'all can, y'all can do, any government can do, so.
Thank you.
Okay, are we satisfied with that answer? Or do you want to continue to pull the item, Ms. Winger?
Well, I would like to see it corrected, at least to the degree that it doesn't say that everybody's operating within the budget, because that's not what the figures show.
Mr. Rapley, could you please repair, could you please supply council with a report that tells us how far we are over budget in simple terms, so they don't have to try to figure it out accumulatively in the report?
Not a problem, Mayor.
Thank you very much. You might get a third grader to help you across the street. Okay, we, do we have an item on the table for the, item on the, as far as the agenda, the consent agenda is concerned? I have a motion, please.
I need to accept.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? So the budget, as far as it stands, is not accepted by council. Mr. Gregory, you as a treasurer, I would expect that you get with the, our interim finance officer and get this straightened out right away, please. Mr. Brennan, is that within my authority as the executive officer of the city? And I would like you, sir, to pull the statute that says that. Thank you.
I can do that.
We'll take a five-minute break. All right, we'll come back into session, it's now 6:51. Mr. McCormick, go ahead, sir.
The mayor's authority is set out in Chapter Two of the Castle Hills Code. Division Two lists the election term, it lists the presiding officer of the council, and his, the fact that he doesn't normally have a vote, power to call special meetings, and it lists emergency powers. Nowhere does it list the power to make a, to make a direction to one of the officers on the council to perform any particular duty.
Okay.
State law says that the mayor has the authority given to him by the council, and I don't, I don't see any place where the council has given that authority, certainly not in our code.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, will you review that, please, that answer, and then we'll make sure at the next meeting, we, we find it, I'm sure that book that looks like a Houston phone book has a little bit more authority in it than a couple of sentences. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we're moving on to the, so, the budget, the public hearing, PH1. Conduct a public hearing and act upon Architectural Review Committee's unanimous recommendation to approve an application submitted by Howard Q., owner of Sushi Hana Japanese restaurant located at 1810 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, for the purpose of addition of a new foyer and rooftop tower to enhance natural sunlight within the facility while improving external aesthetics of the building, rebuilding of the existing deck, and reconfiguring of parking spaces. Legal description is CB 5778A, Block Four, Lot 13, Castle Heights subdivision. At this time, it is now 6:56, and I invite Mr. Barry Mittelman of the ARC to comment on this. Hello, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to comment that this was a very significant responsibility for the Architecture Review Committee, because this is such a noteworthy business in the city of Castle Hills, and, and there were.
Could you raise your bike a bit?
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
It, Sushi Hana is such a noteworthy business of the city of Castle Hills, and this being a fairly sizable commercial establishment, we, we had some preliminary meetings prior to the Architecture Review Committee meeting, in which we engaged the architect and Mr. Hugh regarding fire, fire code issues, life safety. We brought and asked Chief Dover to sit in one of the meetings, to be sure that we were all in agreement that the, that the remodeling and, and of the restaurant would conform with the city's fire code regulations. We were questioning the parking issue, and everything we've asked of them, they've, they've conformed to, they have made adjustments in their plans, and we wanted to be sure that it was buttoned up, complete, and, and to our satisfaction before we met formally for the Architecture Review Committee meeting, and it went through very quickly, as you'll see tonight, the presentation is excellent, the quality of the work is excellent, and we passed it unanimously. And I just want to commend them on the, the preparation they've made for, for this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Barry. Okay. Mr. Hugh, would you like to step forward and, and tell us a little bit about your project, Howard? They have it in the packet, but sort of in layman's terms.
Do you mind if I have the architect?
Not at all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Marcelo Martinez, I'm architect for Mr. Hugh, my address is 717 North Alamo. Would you like to see the presentation, or just give you a summation?
Just a summation, I think is fine, I think we're all familiar, unless council would like more. Council, would you like the whole nine yards, or do you want to go through the summation?
I can talk for hours.
It's up to you, council. I'm sorry.
I said I could talk for hours, but I'm.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, I'll give you a summation, if you have a question, I'll, we can go further, how, does that, will that work?
Okay, I'm sure, there's no doubt in my mind, they'll have some questions for you.
Thank you, sir. So, we're not adding seating to the restaurant, we're actually changing the flow of the restaurant. If you've ever eaten there, and I hope you have, the waiting area is quite congested, and not very comfortable for the, for the customers waiting for a table. And then also, as, when I first visited the restaurant, it took me three chances to find the front door. So the, the natural wayfinding was a little off, I said, well, let me, and I, and I talked to Howard, I think a year ago, I said, Howard, you know what, your building needs a little tower. He says, tower? I need, I need a new roof. I said, no, no, you need a tower, and, and here's why. And so we fixed the natural intuitive wayfinding, fixed the entry sequence, he gained an airlock to save air, air-conditioned air in the summertime, not going out immediately one pair of doors. If you're waiting for a table, there's now a bar area that you can wait in, as opposed to that little tiny hallway you have to wait in now. And it actually reorients the internal flow of his restaurant, and in so doing, we demolished the deck and rebuild it, is partly the consequence of what we're doing. So at the end of the day, he's only adding 300 square feet of circulation path, we're not adding dining room space, we're not adding that kind of space, making his internal flow more efficient, making the building more visually appealing, and helping with his air conditioning bills.
Thank you. Council, was there any, since this is a public hearing, we'll be flowing as usual, but is there any specific questions you would like to ask the gentleman at this time? Okay, thank you, Dover, thank you, sir. Okay. With that said, we've opened a hearing, and there, let's see who's signed up to speak here. Walt Graham.
Good evening, council and fellow residents of Castle Hills. My name is Walt Graham, 101 Zornian. I am a forty-plus-year resident of this city, and up until very recently, I've been very proud to be a resident of this city. I would like to say that Sushi Hana has been a very good neighbor. They are conscientious, they are concerned about our welfare. Mr. Ho or Hugh? Who? Okay. Has been very cooperative, he is always very courteous, I feel like he is doing a great job in that area. We've had only one major problem, and that was when one of his vendor's eighteen-wheeler took, came into our yard and took a 100-year-old tree, oak tree down. He was responsive to that, nothing really was done, but it was done. The problem that I see there is that, at the current time, right now, there are 12 of his employees' cars parked in the lot that is designed for customers. During the day, there are five cars that park that are employees of Pets First Vet. So if you add those up, we have at least almost 20 cars that are parked in that area that cause the overflow to go onto the street. Since our house is directly across the street, we have no problem with Sushi Hana at all. But some of their customers park on our lawn, there is also an area there where when they park, there is a space of less than 12 feet that's roadway that is open. It is blocked after that. And now, we hear about Chief Dover telling us that we need to watch our tree height and so forth, that we need to have emergency vehicles come down that street. When those cars are parked there, there's no way that you could get any fire equipment down that street at all. Perhaps we can address that with a sign, a no parking sign could go up in that area. But, you know, we're very happy with Sushi Hana, we wouldn't change anything, except perhaps explore some additional parking, there is parking across the street that can be, I'm certain, made available, but that's our only concern, and we thank him for all that he does.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Next on the list is Seal Graham. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Unless I'm missing something here, is there anyone else that was signed up to speak? They can, yeah, I'll get out of public and then we'll get into consideration of the motion, and then you'll be able to say anything you want. Okay, with that said, I'm going to close this public hearing, and it is now 7:01. And we'll move into regular consideration of the item. Is there someone, let's get something on the table, and then we'll get into discussion, if you don't mind, please. Motion for the item to move forward?
I'll move it forward. Great, I'll move it.
Thank you, Moretta, and Mr. McCormick, he seconds the item. Okay, it's on the table. Douglas, would you like to speak on this first?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Ms. Winger?
Yeah, I, I think that the issue that Mr. Graham has raised is an important one, particularly when it applies to the convenience of the residents who live on that street, there are some very nice houses on that street, including his, that pay a lot in taxes, but also the issue with the emergency vehicles. So I think that needs to be addressed, and I would like to. So I think that needs to be addressed and I would like to know, is this an issue at night or also in the daytime? Can you answer that, Mr. Graham?
It's at noon, they are open until 2:00 as I understand and then it's later in the evening, particularly around 1:00, first, early, worst possible day.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McClain? Thank you Leslie.
I have no questions, but, you know, I do think we do need to address the parking, but I think that would be for another day with an ordinance in front of Council.
I think it was just brought forward as a suggestion at this point.
Sure.
Go ahead Ms. Scott.
Reviewing the plans, I have to compliment the architect on getting 17 additional parking spaces into the existing space, that was quite a feat and I was very impressed. So, I'm hoping those 17-plus spaces will assist with our citizen and his concerns. If it does not seem to help, I certainly see there's no reason why Council can't come back and look at possibly putting some no parking signs there where people shouldn't park, so that's certainly something that could be easily taken care of. I have to say, I really enjoyed reviewing these plans, the flow through here is so much better than it was, I can't wait to go back after the renovations, the chance to have a waiting lounge in the bar, oh, excites me. As you can tell, I really enjoy good design and just looking at it, it was, I was really excited to see what I thought was an excellent use of space and delineating clear entrance because I had the same problem first time I went, I didn't know where I was going in, now you clearly have an entrance. So, once again, I was so glad to see 17 extra parking spaces because I had noticed that myself was a possible issue, which brings it up to 64 spaces and the occupancy is only 85, so hopefully as long as not everyone's driving their own vehicle to work, I mean to vehicle to eat, that should help with that. But, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing such a completed, well-thought-out project to us, I appreciate it.
Thank you Ms. Scott, Mr. McCormick.
I have one or two questions. I'm concerned, not so much with the long-term effect of parking, because it appears the additional 17 spaces that you've prepared in your current plan may help resolve that. I'm concerned with what happens during construction, I don't know when that's going to begin or how long it's going to last, can you address that for us?
Yes sir, Marcelo Martinez again, we're planning on about a three-month construction period and it'll happen when he's less busy, like he has identified a time of the year that he has, he's not as busy, so to impact his business minimally. And if you turn to the wall, you see this is military here, this is the existing building, this is Zornia on the top. The construction activity will be happening on the military side of the building and all of the construction crew and noise and dust will be in this part of the parking lot facing military, nothing will be on the Zornia side, nothing will be on the back of the restaurant, it'll all be contained to the commercial busy side of the restaurant because the work is all happening right here. So we're kind of in and out, right through here, and then this is the area that is going to be fenced off for the construction activity, storage and whatnot.
During that period of time, will you be conducting normal restaurant operations?
Yes sir, he'll remain open and of course, excuse our mess and sushi specials, I'm guessing, but you know, that kind of thing, you know, he'll manage.
So these parking spaces that are currently in front of your building will be occupied by construction crews?
Well, no sir, no sir.
Restaurant customers.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Restaurant customers then will have to park elsewhere and likely down Zornia.
I apologize for cutting you off, so the first thing we're going to do is add these five spaces, so that'll, so we'll gain these five and then we're only going to take away four during construction, so there'll actually be a net increase of one during construction and the construction crews will, no one is going to occupy any of these spaces from the construction team.
Well, maybe parking.
They're going to carpool.
They're going to carpool?
Yes sir, and the crew that we have that has done many restaurants and are used to restaurants, restaurants as you can imagine are some of the hardest things to work on and they're used to doing all the hoops restaurants require.
Okay, and how much additional capacity, seating capacity will this give you restaurant?
We're not adding any seating capacity.
None at all?
That's correct.
So we'd be expecting about the same parking that we've had in the past, we will have the additional 17 parking spaces?
Yes sir.
Once you get construction complete?
That's correct.
Can I ask a couple of questions to Mr. Rapley? What's the possibility, Mr. Rapley, of putting in a temporary no parking on one side of Zornia that might help alleviate the problem that Mr. Graham has identified and it might affect our emergency vehicles?
I mean, it's something we can evaluate to see if that's possible, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't do that, in talking both chiefs, we can see if that's possible.
Then perhaps we could investigate it, I'm sorry, Mr. Graham, you had something else?
Yes, the area on the far left, I don't, I can't tell exactly how many places that are there, but at the current time, let's be honest, maybe five or six spaces there where the trees are, at the current time, there are 12 vehicles, if you would like to go and jump on right now, there are 12 vehicles there where they're showing like five.
They're parking 12 vehicles where you say they indicate only five parking spaces, is that right?
On the far left, in this direction, under the trees, right this way, there are 12 employee vehicles parked in that area.
Okay, thank you, I'm not sure how we address that, but it looks like if we looked at some point down the way of putting in no parking on one side of Zornia, that might alleviate the problem for emergency vehicles, we could evaluate it further after the construction is complete. Would that resolve the issues, do you think, Mr. Rapley?
I would say it probably would, but again, we could look at the feasibility of doing it from a traffic standpoint.
Mr. Graham, do you think that would solve the problem for emergency vehicles if we put no parking on one side of Zornia, at least temporarily while the construction's underway?
Sir, there generally is no parking on, on the north side of Zornia, right there. There's no curb there, so the only kind of cars or vehicles that are parked there would be when they are at full capacity and that would be parking on, on large law and on our law. You know, being able to check to that, it doesn't bother us personally, but that restricts that street to about 10 or whatever, totally, from that side.
When their cars parked on both sides, is that right, Mr. Graham?
No, sir, it didn't have to be that, there's an area that, right in the middle of the grassy area that's shown there, probably is above where the feet is or the horn is, there's an area there that is further into the street than the other area and if people park there, the width of the street is reduced to like 10 to 12 feet, I went out and measured that today.
Okay, so it sounds like to me, on top of parking space number 62 is where you're indicating, which would be the center spot there on the additional spaces there at the very, very top. So it sounds like an easy solution, that would be simply put a no parking sign facing out, that this is a grassy area, no parking in this area, then if they do park there, they'd have to face the consequences of a possible ticket or fine or some sort of thing. So, possibly a no parking sign right on top of parking space 62 would be something possibly for us to look into, to keep them off of there. Did you also mention that they were parking underneath the trees in non-designated spaces across the left side of the plan? On the yellow spaces on the side marked 58, 57, 56?
If I may, so I've actually captured that information, so these yellow spaces are what I'm calling double park spaces.
Right, those would be for employees because they're going to stay, they're double parked.
Exactly, so Howard is trying to be extremely efficient by making his employees double park to-
And just double check with his employees, please park in a designated space, don't create your own back here behind 52 and 53 on the grass on the trees.
That's exactly right, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you, and that's Mr. Hugh.
Where or not, actually the problem comes from Pet's First because they have their techs come over and park in Mr. Hugh's area and also in the, where are used to people in expressions, they come over there as well. And so consequently, it's not only their, it's the employees that are falling out from Pet's First, which rarely, you know, they don't have sufficient parking there.
Okay, so it's trickle-over parking.
I'm trying to remember.
Okay, thank you so much, I just wanted to look at this and see if there were a few possibly simple solutions for some signage, maybe even some Sushi Hana parking only signs put up within the Sushi Hana parking lot itself and-
I'm thinking up to the, to the, to the, to the-
Yeah, to the, yeah, to the, between the-
Parking area, particularly on that area that, that is intended for oil, for oil supply, and served in the area.
Okay, well, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, it's certainly something that I believe Mr. Rapley can look into and advise us further.
Yes, to answer your question, Ms. McCormick, we don't want to do anything that reduces the width for, you know, potential impact for our emergency services and talking to the chief, we have one location currently in Castle Hills that has no parking due to that constraint of possibility of limiting emergency vehicles, so it's definitely something we can look at and evaluate moving forward.
Do you think that applying a no parking requirement on part of that street would resolve this problem for both the emergency vehicles and traffic?
It could potentially, I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think it might reduce it, obviously if we've done it in another location in the city-
Sure.
From that standpoint, obviously they'd have to abide by it and possibly face towing, but I think it's something we could work with Mr. Hugh and his restaurant on as well.
Okay, so you don't see a problem there if we were to approve this application?
I can't see anything that would be a problem right now.
You say the people who are going to do the work on this building are going to carpool, correct?
Yes sir, that is correct.
How many cars are we talking about? Estimate.
Two, they'll bring two cars to the site.
I was going to suggest if it was a great number that we carton off a few spots here in the parking lot of City Hall and let them just park here, but-
I agree, heaven forbid we'd be friendly.
Well, if, I don't see anything wrong with that.
If they're allowed to park here, I think that'd be convenient as a park and ride from City Hall and we'll take, we'll take kids to St. George also.
I don't see anything wrong with that. That would work every day but Thursday.
Every day but Thursday, any day but Thursday.
Every day but Thursday because it's lots full of-
What, I appreciate your generosity, thank you.
Thank you.
For attendees.
Howard, you and I had a discussion a few years ago, back when things were tough and we talked about the day that you would, you would be in this situation, if you remember that, and we knew it was going to happen, it was just going to take a matter of time and now it's a great situation to be in, but the residents down in that area, I totally understand what they're going through and I have a question, have you talked to, have you talked to Eddie or next door, do you have a relationship with him? And I've seen that work in Dallas and Houston where there's a spillover, even with Chris Madrid, my partner years ago, you know, I've seen that work and I just want to see if, if-
You know, I personally have no idea what's going on across the street, what's happening to that grocery store, but as far as for us, we're very concerned about where our customer and where our employee parking, so I understand Mr. and Mrs. Graham's concern, it's just that, over the years, we build our business, but we're at a point where I don't think we're going to grow any more bigger, well, all we try to do is to make it a little bit more functional. And then, and I don't know if you know that Dr. Meadow, which is the Pet First next door, he and I would go back a long way, I mean, 15 years ago, we shared the same parking lot together and then he reconstructed his building and then his building got pushed back, but anyway, to make a long story short, is that, that he and I, we have a parking agreement where we can park his, we could do the overflow parking at his property after 6:30 every night. So, what we're trying to do right now is to post a sign on our property to make sure that we discourage any patron from parking on the street, hopefully they'll see the sign and park at the vet clinic.
Well, the answer to that is, and as Mr. McCormick was talking about and I believe Chief Dover dove in, unfortunately, we can stop it real fast and stick signs up in Mr. Graham's yard-
Right.
About every 10 feet that says no parking.
Right.
And kill the aesthetics of his house, which if I was Mr. Graham, I'd be yelling. But, you know, it's a good problem to have, but I think that there's, I don't think you're going to stop growing, Howard, unless you open it and, and that's fine, that's fine. You know, if you remember, I was the one that said I'd love to see Northwest Military become Las Vegas Boulevard, but that's probably why I lost an election, but, but anyway, thank you so much for planning on what you're, what you're doing Howard and I hope Council, you had some very good ideas. Okay, anyone else? Okay, all right, we have before us a Architectural Review Committee unanimous recommendation to approve the application submitted by Howard Hugh, we've written it off, we've had a public hearing, we have a motion on the table and seconded by Mr. McCormick and Ms. Scott and so let's, let's do a vote. So all in favor of letting this go forward, raise your hand, it is unanimous, thank you Howard and you bet, good luck to you Howard. Okay, yes?
You know, this brings up an interesting possibility, maybe we should look into renting out parking spaces at City Hall for people-
Mr. Mayor, point of order, it's not an agenda item.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Rapley, could you get with, with Mr. Gregory and let's talk about some ways to alleviate some constrained situation in our area, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business, it's one, consider and act upon an ordinance 2018-0710, amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances, regular city council meetings shall be held on the second Tuesday of each month, except in a month of May of each year, with the regular city council meeting will be heard on the third Tuesday.
So moved.
Do we have a second on that item?
Second.
All right, let's go into discussion. Mr. McCormick, did you have any comments on this one please? On the, item number one under new business?
I'm sorry?
Item number one under new business.
Yes. I can see some benefits to it, if we have five-hour council meetings twice a month, that's a killer.
I'll vote for that, of course I don't have a vote. Ms. Scott?
Well, I'd rather have two five-hour council meetings than one 10-hour council meeting a month, so that's why I think we should continue to hold two council meetings each month on the second and fourth Tuesday. We have it set up where every other fourth Tuesday is a workshop rather than an actual action meeting, so that is once again to keep with our openness and our transparency with our citizens that we can come and talk about issues that might be coming up on the agenda, so they can hear what we're thinking and workshop those items. Having two action meetings, like I said, the past two meetings have gone till midnight or later, so if you're combining those, we're talking about going till 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, once again, I think that limits the trans-
Once again, I think that limits the transparency of council and, I don't know, many citizens that are gonna stay until midnight or one or two or three, if we're trying to cram two council meetings into one. Um, so I do not think we need to go back in time to only one meeting a month, I need to think we need, should keep both meetings each month. And, um, I do have an issue with this third Tuesday meeting in May, because as you train people, that something always happens on the second Tuesday, and always happens on the fourth Tuesday, and that happens eleven months out of the year. Come May, they're gonna show up on the second Tuesday, because that's when the meetings are always happening. To move it to the third Tuesday, just one random month of the year, uh, does not seem to make, uh, much sense to me, so, once again, I don't think that it should be the same, every second and fourth Tuesday, six-thirty, same time, same channel here in chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, and Ms. McLean.
I echo what Mrs. Scott said about the two meetings a month. I am concerned that this is not more efficient, this is less efficient. I don't see how having less meetings will be more efficient. Um, one of the issues written on the Agenda Com on this issue was, um, the current meeting schedule conflicted with the master schedule for development of the budget, and I considered this to be great planning on Mr. Rapley's part, that he could figure out a way to make the budget dovetail with meetings we already have on our calendars, and that our citizens would already have on their calendars. Um, there is, there is no precedent anywhere in the neigh- in the area that I can find where in May, just because it happens to be in election time, that you have a randomly bizarre day for your city council meetings. Everyone has a strict schedule of second Tuesdays, or fourth Tuesdays, or second and fourth Tuesdays, or whatever the days are the cities have decided, there's no random one-off date. And I'm really curious who, who drafted the ordinance that was proposed to us on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Winger?
Well, we haven't really shortened our meetings, as was originally, uh, suggested, by having two meetings a month, and it is very stressful for staff, I have discussed this with Mr. Rapley, to be, you know, moving, jumping from one meeting to another. Um, as we know, if there's a need, you can always call a workshop, we're not, we actually don't even have two meetings a month the way the schedule goes right now. It's up to you, as the mayor, to call a workshop whenever you see the need, um, and you can also call a special call meeting whenever you see the need. Um, but just to have this regularly, um, you know, every single month, and have the staff, you know, never really having a break, I, I don't think is beneficial overall to the citizenry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gregory?
I agree with the ordinance as written.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Who drafted the ordinance that was provided to our, in our packet? Did Mr. Brennan draft that, or was that drafted by a member of council?
Who drafted the ordinance? Mr. Brennan, did you draft the ordinance on, uh, this, uh, item number one?
I didn't draft it, Mayor, but I did have one or two suggestions that are included in it.
Okay.
I reviewed it.
Okay, all right. Um, I guess, I'm confused about this last, why would you change it on that third Tuesday?
Because it's the, exactly why Ms. McLean said, because we have an election, and we've had this problem year after year, where we have people, if, if nobody changes on council, it's not an issue, but we have had changes on council, we're likely to have changes in the future, and new people get elected, and then suddenly you have the problem that we had this past year, and we've had it in years before, where people are voting for things when they're going off the council. So, rather than have that problem, just for that month, it's announced in advance, that's all that's required by law, move it to the third Tuesday. The other option is, we can simply have all our meetings on the third Tuesday.
Hmm, okay. All right, is there anybody else that had anything to say? Yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, um, Ms. Scott?
Um, once again, I totally disagree with moving it to the third Tuesday on May. I think even if you are voted off of council, you still should have a chance to come back, have your final meeting, thank your constituents. If you have anything pending that has been tabled, that's coming back to that next meeting, wrap up your business, and then move along as the next, after the votes are canvassed, and people are sworn into office, hopefully, you know, um, then get them involved and get moving forward. But, to change it, when you may have business pending, let's wrap up one term and then move on to the next, but to move it to an arbitrary third Tuesday in that one month just does not make any sense to me whatsoever. Let's finish one council term, and then we move on to the next council term.
Ms. McCormick?
Yes, I have a, a couple of thoughts in favor of the, uh, one-meeting-a-month idea. Uh, most of us have heard of Murphy's Law, and there's Murphy's Corollary, which goes along with it, which says that "The work to be done expands, expands to fill the time available to do it." So, if you've got two meetings, it tends to make folks a little lazy about being efficient with their time for the one meeting. I will say that I've talked to a number of, of, uh, mayors and city managers in other towns just in the last few weeks, and I do note that, uh, Live Oak, for example, has council meetings that typically are once a month, and tend to run from thirty minutes to an hour. Uh, so I think there's a lot of room for us to improve the way we run our council meetings. I'd like to see that done before we rush off to have three, to have two or three meetings a month, we can always fill up with something, whether it's useful or not. So, I'm inclined to go with the one meeting a month. As far as the third, the third Tuesday in, in May, I understand the, the impetus for it, being that there is an election, people are gonna be, uh, seated in, on council. The problem is, the council members have to be seated between the ten, between the fifth and the fifteenth day after the election. And generally, if the election's on May fifth, that should mean that you would get those people seated probably the third week, third Tuesday in the month, and that would work. We, this last May, we had, I think, two meetings, we scheduled a couple of extra meetings in order to be able to do that, and that's gonna be an issue. If we could do it on the third Tuesday of the month every year, then I think that's, that's as, that's as easy and a reasonable change from having two meetings, one on the tenth and one on the fifteenth, to do the canvassing and seat council members. So, for that, for that purpose, I think that the third Tuesday might be a useful change, just because every other city that we know of has meetings on the same, the same weekend every month, does not mean that we have to do it exactly that way, and the purpose of setting out a schedule like this is to allow us to do it in the way that fits us best. So, I'm in favor of, of the motion as presented.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, when, when we went to the two meetings a month, we were talking about, uh, positive things. We were talking about, uh, actually, that being a, uh, a workshop where we could talk about the different committees we have and, and things like that. Um, and I, I do understand the time it takes, and I do understand the, the, um, you know, the staff involvement and things like that, and what's going on. So, I've, I guess I'm not smart enough, I've never been smart enough to figure out whether we vote on, uh, every other Tuesday, or whether we just sit there and do a, a meeting. Either way, um, that one still got by me, but, you know, this, this third May thing, admittedly is, I don't think I've ever seen in the history of this city, the wide-sweeping reversal of what the previous council did, and it is an agenda item, so I can talk about that. Um, I would hope that in the future, that at least, uh, if there are two sides out there, that we would come together and agree on something that the other council did. Uh, you know, we've been able to do it for fifty years, so maybe we could, we could move forward. With that said, let's have a vote and move it forward, all in favor of-
Citizen comments.
Thank you, Brother Dooley. Appreciate that. Darn, I thought I was gonna get away with that. All right, let's look at item business one, and we have Brother Dooley is the only person signed up. Sorry, there, honest to goodness, there was a little line there. Here, I'll, I'll show it to you. It is hard to see, but I'm glad you stopped the situation.
You know I would. Brother Dooley, Dooley, two, two zero one, Gladiola Lane, and, um, just as quickly as I can, I think somebody else mentioned it earlier, yes, the previous council made this change, and it has done nothing but cause. Hmm, fill in the blank, confusion, anger, uh, nobody knows. Um, my own view is, I've lived here for twenty-one years, when we had one regular meeting on the second Tuesday of every month, things seemed to go a whole lot smoother. All this additional talk and yak and stuff about whatever at workshops, I don't see where it's, I agree, Mayor, it started out that way, and then it magically changed. Now, maybe I was traveling, I don't know, but then it became off, odd and even months, and, and the fourth one was something else, and, I, I mean, it's just, in my humble opinion, it's ridiculous. I do agree with Ms. Winger about the staff. Uh, some of you may know, I was the municipal judge for ten years, and, um, the court clerk, 'cause I was thinking of some changes, and she said, "Well, no, we can't have court on the second Thursday because," uh, we were thinking of holding it more often, because, said the staff, "We're all," now they use the word cross-trained, but, uh, the court clerks had to stop what they were doing to help city staff get up to speed for the, uh, the meeting on the, the second week, second Tuesday. So, she's, that's why court was on the first and the third, uh, and trial's on the fourth. But, I do think that's a concern, or maybe we've hired so many people, that's no longer a concern. I, I mean, I'm not being facetious about that. Time I'm referring to, the city staff was much smaller than it is today. But I do agree with the mayor, that, you know, if you build it, they will come. If you have more meetings, you have more work, you have more work, you hire more staff, you have, hire more staff, raise the taxes. I mean, it's, you know, but if you don't build it, they can't come, and so then you kinda go in reverse order to make things more workable. And, um, I do agree with Mr. McCormick, though, and I guess Ms. Winger, that I do think the one in May is a good, uh, exception. For many, many years, we didn't even have a meeting in December, because, well, everybody was partying, or I don't know what, I don't know what the rationale was, but they were consistently canceled. So, sometimes, there is a rationale for having a, an odd meeting, and I think that's wise. But this, I think we should have one council meeting a month, and if anything else needs to come up, or a workshop is actually needed, not just talking to fill the vacuum, then the mayor can call it and say, "This is a workshop, and we need to discuss this idea, and here we go." Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooley. Is there anybody else that, there could be a line on the paper up here that I'd missed that wanted to speak on this? I have a question, Mr. Brennan, do I still have the authority to do that, at least?
Special meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Praise the Lord. Okay, with that said, uh, let's take a vote, 'cause there's nobody else signed up to do that. So, all in favor? All opposed? Three to two, surprise, surprise. Okay, let's move on to the next item. I'm pulling this item because it is a disregard and illegal item. The vote was three to two. Illegal item which violates the city manager form of government. You're free to override my, my, uh, decision if you'd like.
I move to overrule.
So, you need, excuse me?
I'd like to appeal your decision to vote, I'd like to talk about it before you-
I'd like to talk, I'd like to appeal Mr. Mayor's decision to a vote for several reasons. One is, it doesn't violate the law, it goes right along with the way the law is right now. As a matter of fact, the law provides at the moment that the city, that the city manager has the right to hire and fire department heads with the advice and consent of the council. The, defining who the apartment heads are is no real violation of any law. There is one definition in our code that says who the, who the department heads are, and it says, "A department, a department head is a person whom by ordinance or administrative policy is in charge of an office which creates or receives records." That's the only definition we have, and so defining who the department heads are doesn't actually change anything about Mr. Rapley's authority, it, it simply delineates where the limits are of the council's authority to use advice and consent to evaluate, to, to approve or disapprove, for example, of hiring or firing of a department head, which is already in our code and, uh, in, in the, uh, in codified ordinances, and I can find that, if you want to quote, it's in the city manager's authority.
Mr. Mayor, I would like a point of law on this particular item.
You can do that as a resident?
Thank you.
Under our rules?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the proposed action is in violation of City Code of Ordinance two dash two six zero, titled City Secretary enacted October fourteenth and subsequently codified.
Tell me again the citation, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, sir. Two dash two six zero, City Code.
May I speak in the meantime?
Uh, if you'd like to. No, we are looking up the statute to see if we can move forward, so I wouldn't at this time.
Well, he's correct that the, that the proposed change would require a change to the, to the secretary's appointment, uh, by the, by the, uh, city manager, and to the, the right to hire and fire the secretary without advice and consent of the, the council. The problem with that, that I see, is that the secretary and the finance officer are both salaried exempt employees already. There really isn't any change to this, except that the city secretary would be hired and fired with the advice and consents of the, of the council.
Thank you, Ms.-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It is a privileged motion that has shut down discussion.
Okay.
Which, which motion is privileged, Mr. Smiley?
The, the motion, um, a point of law called by a citizen. That shuts down the discussion-
Well, it may be, but we already had a motion to call, to call, to call Mayor's decision to a vote of the council, and that's a prior motion, and so should be heard before even Mr. Smiley's-
You asked to speak, you didn't ask for the motion, sir.
I did.
Well, I didn't hear that.
I moved, I moved-
I have called, I have called the point of law before you've done it.
We're gonna roll the tape back and see exactly what was said.
I, I move to overrule.
It's too late.
I already did.
I've already called, I've already called the recess.
Okay.
Seven forty-one. Mini, would you read back exactly what happened here?
Okay, recess, no wonder we have such a long period.
Oh, sorry, too loud? Oh.
We're in recess, sorry.
We're in recess.